Yeah, I just got a message that you're you're streaming.
It's nine o'clock. I'll call the meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. If you please rise, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Brenda.
Pledge of Allegiance, signify, I think United States of America, and in turn the Republic for all purposes. One nation, hundred God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Corn planter doesn't move on. Move on, truly. Um, if, uh, uh, item number two, um, oh, before that, if you have a cell phone, if you could please silence in and if you need to take a call, you could, if you could please step out in the hall, that would be appreciated. Um, item two, uh, if there is a, uh, need for a public comment, you can do it in person or you can call with the phone number six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Um, item three, is there any conflict of interest?
No, no.
Item four, um, we need a motion to approve the May fourteenth agenda.
Second.
Motion by Waterman, second by Van Duzen, um. Any more additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, uh, we need a motion to approve the May seventh minutes. Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen to approve the minutes. Is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item six, discussion possible action for, uh, preservation of the dome murals presented by Christie. Okay, okay. Yeah, just come on up. Yep. Yep, press the on button.
Morning Christie, that round button right there, just push that down.
Yep.
And then you pop right into the mic.
Yeah, sit down.
Okay. Introduce yourself so everybody in the world knows where you are.
Okay, I'm Christie Licki and I work at the Cottington County Historical Society and I've been working with Jamie Mack at the Goss to, um, help her find someone to help preserve the mural that's on the back wall of the Goss Opera House stage. And so we've been looking around and there are some preservationists who are good at preserving paintings on canvas that you bring to them. And there are some that are really good at stuff that's on the wall and stays on the wall. So we found a company, uh, in Gross Point, Michigan, and they do restoration of murals that are on the wall. Um, and so I just wanted to tell you guys about it because, uh, sometimes it's kind of hard to get fancy people from far away to come to Watertown. And if we got these people to come for the Opera Hall, we could share travel if you also wanted them to come and look at the murals that are in the dome. Now, I'm not an expert on murals or anything like that, but I did take some photos of the murals. Uh, there's some water damage, the plaster above the south mural is kind of chunked off. And this building will be one hundred in nineteen twenty-nine. So I thought maybe you might want to just spruce her up a little bit for a big party on her hundredth. But I just mainly wanted you to know that these folks might be coming. So you would get some sort of a discount by piggybacking onto the Goss. Um, and they are experts in paintings that are on the wall. And if you're interested, I'm sure we can have Tony Zoom with you. Um, the company is located in Gross Point Park, Michigan, and they've done a lot of work in Greenfield Village, which is, uh, a historic home village next to the Henry Ford Museum in Dearborn. And so, uh, they have a website, they have all sorts of references and things like that. Um, he said that there would be two options. One would be that they come, they look, they do some tests, make sure that what they put on there isn't going to wash everything off. Uh, or you know, do all sorts of scientific things and then they give you a report and a plan. And option two would be you set up some scaffolding and say, you come take a look and then get busy and start working on it. So there's a couple of different options, but I think, um, they probably haven't been cleaned since we all stopped smoking indoors. And like I said, if you go up on the third floor and really look, you can see where water has at some point run down all of that, those shelves and things up there and paints kind of curling up and stuff. So, um.
Christie, are you talking about the dome here in the courthouse? Okay.
Yeah. So, so I'm thinking that if we had them come for the Goss, they could come for a couple of days and do the Goss. And then if you wanted them to come over here, we'll just send them over here and then we don't have to pay for them to go all the way back to Michigan and come back again. And I know this isn't probably on your budget or your agenda, but if the birthday party of a hundred is in twenty-nine, we have a couple of years to think about it. But I just wanted you to know that we had found this company and that I think there are some issues with the historic preservation. And it is the, we do have the most beautiful county capital in South Dakota, which is why that dome is on the front cover of the Historical Society's book about all the county capitals in South Dakota. So I think we might want to spruce it up a little.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Gable.
So Christie, when do you need to know by if we were to share costs of their visit with the Goss? Because like you said, it's not budgeted, so, but I'm guessing, and then do you have a rough order of magnitude on the cost?
Um, well, I did have them write up something just so we would have some numbers. And if we wanted them to just come and look and see what they could do, uh, I think it would be around forty-one hundred dollars. If there was scaffolding and a lift in place when they came, they might, what he said to me was, I'll schedule this many hours. I'll do the testing and all of this. And if that's done, if I schedule twelve hours and if that's done in six hours, then I'll just start fixing on stuff for the second six hours. So, um, but it depends, it depends if there's scaffolding and if there's that. We were thinking for the Goss, if we could get the grant done, that we would try and get them out here at least to look at the mural at the Goss, uh, this summer sometime. But that's also flexible depending on wedding season and when the stage is available and when these folks can come out. So we're, we're flexible, but we were thinking of the Goss, I mean, every time they have a concert, a little bit more of that mural shakes off onto the floor. So, um, so we're trying to, you know, within the next six months to a year probably, but summer is probably highest on the list.
So when would they need to know, uh, in order to plan a trip, I guess, what, when would we have to say something?
Well, if you're interested in participating this summer, we'd probably have to know within a month. But if it, if you wanted to push it out to next winter, um, then maybe in six months, I think. It's really in the early stages of planning. We haven't written a grant for the Goss yet. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that this was an opportunity and that we didn't leave you out since there's not a whole lot of paintings on walls in Cottington County.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question? That forty-one hundred that you mentioned, would that be the county's portion of that or would that be the total?
Um, no, it's forty-one hundred for the county. And then I think the Goss was forty-six because their stuff is a little bigger. Um, I did have him write out, uh, I had, uh, it's, the company's called Historic Surfaces and I had them, uh, write up just a cursory, like what they might do. And he did this from photos that I sent him. So I can give this to Brenda and she can give you copies. I have it in email too. So, but that has a little bit more detail of what they would be able to do if you want to look at that and then, um, and then let me know if you want me to have them. And like I said, I'm sure that Historic Surfaces and Tony would come, uh, and do a Zoom with you and answer more questions and things like that.
Okay.
I have a question, if I could. So you're talking about a grant. Is there an availability for a grant for the county to apply for?
There probably is. I think the Deadwood Grant is a fifty-fifty match, so we could do that. The Goss and I were planning on going to the Community Foundation. I don't know if the county qualifies for a Community Foundation Grant, but I know they do have some funds that are just for historic preservation. Um, I'm not really sure what the county would, I'm not sure which grants you guys would be qualified for. I know which ones I qualify for because I do those a lot. But, um, it might be worth a phone call because there are, uh, like I said, there's the Deadwood Fund, um, and then, uh, the Community Foundation. There's also the Mary Chilton DAR in Sioux Falls. And I'm not sure of the cutoff dates for their grants, but they also do historic preservation grants. So they're, what's that one called? Mary Chilton DAR, and that's in Sioux Falls and they have a website.
Chair, I made a comment that, you know, Christie, I appreciate you bringing this to us because every now and then, I know there was some people from back home up in the area here about a year ago, and it kind of surprised me and I, I asked him, I said, what, is there something I can help you with or are you looking for some office? And I said, no, we just come to look at the dome, just come to look at the courthouse. And I don't know, you know, you hear all the time, you see people come in and just wander around. I, I didn't know people did that, but they said they, they just loved it here. They were up looking at the dome and.
Well, uh, Vicky Kingsleyan, uh, lives in Cottington County and her, I think it was her grandfather was on the original county commission that designed this building. And they really wanted to make a functional building that was also beautiful. Like that was one of their priorities was to make something that we could be proud of. And, uh, and so I think that's kind of a cool idea. And, um, and I think, you know, especially when you walk in, it really does, it's a gorgeous building and new buildings just aren't, aren't pretty like that all the time now. And so I think it's kind of cool. A lot of us, we just go, we go get the tags for our cars, we look at the floor, we write the check, we get out of here. Not a lot of people stop and look around and see how gorgeous of a piece of art this really is.
So Christie, you might want to segue into what you have started with the youth and kind of getting your interest. So that will be coming up as well. So you can.
Yes. So if you're talking about people being here, um, about five years ago, uh, Anne Despiegler asked me to come up with some sort of field trip that would be about Watertown, but that would be fun. And I was like, hey, what is that supposed to mean? But I get it. So, uh, we came up with the Amazing Race. So every year, and for the last three years, we have had every third grader in Watertown. We put out twenty plastic shoeboxes around downtown and in every shoebox, there's a challenge. You have to look at a picture and read two sentences of history and then you have to do a thing. And so like they go to the old city hall and that's where the fire department was. So if your house was on fire in Watertown, you had to run to city hall, run up three flights of stairs and ring a bell. So the firemen would know to come put out your fire. Uh, and so they do a shuttle run with chalk and we have a bell. So they have to see who's the fastest in their group, who would go and ring the fire bell. So we have like twenty different things and they go in the old post office and they have to solve a code to figure out which box, mailbox the thing is in. And they come to the courthouse and they have to go up on the third floor and look at the art and, uh, see what the two pictures are about. So, um, that'll be happening this Friday and next Monday and Tuesday. So there'll be about sixty kids that'll be running around downtown each of those days. And me earlier putting out shoeboxes with my little wagon and then picking them up again.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes. No, it's really fun. And, uh, we get a lot of kids, we get a lot of parents who learn stuff about places in Watertown and, and really have a good time.
When you actually stop and, and look, there's a lot of history that people don't know about, about downtown. It's, it's interesting.
Well, downtown used to be a big deal and I hope someday it gets to be a little bit bigger of a deal, but, uh, it's still pretty cool, you know? They bag groceries at the old OP Skaggs and they look at old pictures to see what streets used to be named and they mostly just get to run around outside like maniacs, which is fun when you're in third grade. So.
Um, I guess I would, I would tell you, we'll look into all of this and we'll look into maybe some of the grants and see because, uh, we just know it's important to preserve what we have.
Yeah, no, that's cool. I just wanted to make sure you knew that we had these people on the hook and that we're planning to get them here. And if you wanted to piggyback on it, that would be super. So, uh, if you could just let me know what you find and what you decide. I still have to talk to Amanda about writing a grant for, for the Goss's portion of figuring out how we're going to do this. And once we have money, then we can look at a calendar and see when, when we can do it.
Timing is the issue on this is we need to know within a month, you said?
Well, I can talk to Brenda about the grants and see if we can, first you have to find some money. And then after you have the money, then you can schedule the visit. And then after the visit, they might say that it's going to cost this much more to do all the things. Then we gotta find some more money. So I just, we can, we can be in contact back and forth. Um, just as long as you know and I give you the contact information. Okay?
Yep. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Gable.
So, so the forty-one hundred dollars, that includes the travel and the twelve hours of work, is that correct?
Um, I gave the piece of paper to Brenda, but yes, I think so. Let's see. Um, so it says a cursory examination would be twenty-three hundred dollars. And that would be one full day on site with additional time for minor travel and writing up a report. If you wanted a full examination, they would spend a total of thirty hours. That would be two full days on site with additional time for minor, minor travel and report. Uh, a total budget for a full examination would be forty-one hundred. Access of scaffolding or lift to the murals and decorative finishes would be provided by the client. And it says that this pricing is contingent on them coming at the same time that they come for the other project in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Christian.
Yeah, thank you, Christie. Okay, item seven, it's, we'll start our month reports, um, with our WIC office. If you'd like to come up.
Morning.
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 Well, good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Kayla, the dietitian manager for WIC in the Northeast Region. And today I brought with me Angie.
Hi, I'm Angie and I'm with WIC, the new WAPA.
Yeah. So if you remember this last fall, I had come and asked if, um, the, one of the county clerical positions in WIC could become a WPA, the WIC Public Health Assistant. So, um, wanted to bring Angie to introduce you to her. She was hired in, um, November and then she did a lot of training. And she started providing WIC services in early February of this year. And she's doing a great job. We're, you know, really happy. Um, I don't know if you wanted to say a couple of things about it?
Yeah, well, I've just, you know, really enjoyed the opportunity, um, serving our community in a different way. Um, I used to be with the Boy Scouts, so it's been kind of a fun opportunity to, to do it this way. But, uh, yeah, it's been great. I, I can't say any, anything bad about it. It's been wonderful.
Glad you're there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I enjoy it.
So, and then in front of you, I just kind of have like, um, first quarter report, um, just kind of going over, you know, the monthly numbers. Um, in Cottington County here, we have three stores that are, do WIC approved food. So, um, County Fair, Walmart and Hy-Vee. And during the first quarter, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars were spent, food dollars were spent. Um, and as far as like training and stuff goes for our staff, we have, um, we call them Training Tuesdays. So the first and third Tuesday of the month, we have, um, our, our primary trainer does a hour and fifteen minute phone call with everyone, um, you know, going over new topics or, um, having different educations brought in. And then the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, we have an opportunity through, um, a child grant that is with USD and, um, the South Dakota Department of Health to provide, um, information on cultural competencies and then being trauma informed too for our staff.
Anybody have any other questions?
The graph you have here looks about, it pertains to participation. Um, four eighty, is, is that a, I don't know how am I going to say that? Is that a good number?
Yeah.
You know, I, you know, because do we want less numbers there?
No, we want that, you know, that's the participants that we're serving in Cottington County. So, you know, the more that we can have, you know, that we're, for meeting the need of the participants that need our services.
But if the need was less, that number would be a little bit lower.
Right. Yeah. I mean, depending on how.
So, you know, that's what I'm saying. You know, I don't know if it's a good or bad, you know what I'm saying? But four hundred and eighty, that's, it's been that pretty regularly.
Yeah, it's been pretty stable. Yep.
Okay. So it's a good number.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
It's pretty consistent, it's like.
Yep. Yeah. And obviously we're always working on, you know, getting more participation and stuff like that too with outreach events and stuff throughout the community and the county and stuff too. So.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks guys. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, next is Brenda.
Right.
Our auditor.
Yes, good morning again. Um, busy working on election stuff right now. I don't even know. Uh, now the school board has announced they'll be having an election as well. So I'm helping with their ballots and that whole process to get them going. Um, we've had a pretty good flow of early voters back in twenty twenty-two, May of twenty twenty-two, there was a hundred and seventy-one at this time, or pretty close to that time. We are at two twenty-one as of yesterday at five o'clock. So we have fifty more voters, um, this year. I've sent all the election publications to the legal newspapers and I'm starting to collect the twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four budget requests from county offices. So other than that, it's just busy with election details. Do you have any questions? I think we lost Lee. I'm not sure. I don't see him.
I'm here. I just turned off my camera for a second.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Um, next we'll have, uh, Shawna come up. Equalization office.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, huh?
We're saving all of our questions for you.
Okay, well, mine's can be short and sweet and to the point. Um, for approximately the next five-ish months, we are going to be doing our just continuously daily working on transfer splits, new plaits. Um, the appraisers and I are starting the reappraisal. Um, we finally got out, a couple of the girls got out yesterday. The smoke was a little thick for one of our office staff to go out. So we're planning on going out today. Um, but honestly, that's basically what we'll be doing for, for most of the summer. So. Exciting.
Good.
That's really all I got.
And what, I think you had mentioned before, what townships are you?
We are doing Graceland, PIPs and Henry. There are our last three townships out in the county.
Okay.
And there's been PSA sent out and, and things like that, that we do beforehand, but they always know we're coming. They always know.
Very good.
Very good.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning, Sarah.
Oh, you did. Oh, okay. Sounds good. I guess you have copies. That's right. It's okay. Good. Good morning.
Good morning, Sarah.
Hi.
Good morning, Sarah.
Hi. Um, okay, I think mine will be kind of short and sweet as well. The monthly report, I think we are finally getting, um, the reporting accurate in our office, um, consistent across everybody. And so you can see, um, forty, we served forty individuals in April with ninety-two different contacts with those individuals and seventy-three different services. The finances jumping down to the bottom, the year-to-date costs, we're right around seven thousand spent this fiscal year for funerals. That is a little bit off because some of the December comes out, so it, it's a little bit higher, but this is January through now. Um, and then case management is what we spend most of the time doing, which is, our goal is to get people so that they don't need financial assistance and that does happen through case management. On the backside, just talks about our completed services, the types of services we've done. Yeah, more, on the bottom, a majority of the contacts are through the phone, but there are a significant number of appointments and walk-ins as well. Actually, appointments were our majority in April. So, any questions on that? All right, other updates, CARE's ERA, um, Carrie continues to be busy with that. In April, she had thirty-five hundred dollars administrative fees reimbursed for that, for the work that she's doing with that. For the impact in CHW, in February, we were reimbursed six thousand, fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents from the grant. And our Medicaid reimbursement was nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cents. So almost a thousand dollars reimbursed on Medicaid, which is our long-term sustainability plan to get that Medicaid reimbursement up to cover the cost of that position. The CHW conference is next week and, um, Paige is planning to attend both days. Carrie's going to attend the first day and then I'm going to attend the second day so that we continue to have good office coverage. Paige is also going to be presenting on some of the work that she's doing as a CHW. So that's a, um, just a good recognition of the good work that they're doing here in our office. For our community services office, we attended the Reaching Rural Conference. We had the group of six people, I had mentioned that the six of us attended that, um, it's myself, Judge Means, Carrie Johnston from HSA, Alexa Spicy from the Police Department, Monica Everson from the Hospital and Stacy Hendricks from, um, Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars. And it ended up being a fantastic conference. I think it is opening the door to a lot of great opportunities. And so we meet with, we'll continue to meet with the coaches once a month. They're going to make a visit here to Watertown in June. And then, um, we're exploring some pretty significant grant opportunities that will likely come out of that. They had told us that we would, if we can come up with a plan, there's a very good chance that we would be eligible for a hundred thousand dollars through this grant. But when we were there, they were talking about much larger grants that we would likely be eligible for, being from a rural community, coming together to do the work that we're doing. So there's some really great opportunities there. Um, we've also asked Lee to be part of that with the Justice Department, Justice work that he's doing. So we'll be having some more conversations going forward with that. Um, Carrie and Paige are finishing the training for that coordinated entry system through the South Dakota Housing Authority so that they'll be able to do the assessment here for homeless people. And so they should be finishing that up within, by the end of this month. They'll be done with that and be able to start that process. And then the larger community work, the systems of care pieces, the housing, we, um, the consultant can, has started interviewing some of the community members for that. And then we will have, we moved the strategic planning session to the end of July. And so at that point, there'll be a small group of community members that will be looking at the, the data from the, um, consultant and starting to put together a strategic plan with a larger community housing summit following that. Um, we don't have a date set for that, but following that. Um, the needs assessment that we are, that's funded through the Beyond Idea Grant, that should be done by the end of June. So we'll get some good data from that. And that is really targeted to our client population. And then the big thing that's spent a lot of time is childcare. We did have a community announcement at the end of April and then we have a town hall meeting tomorrow evening at five thirty PM at Lake Area Tech to discuss childcare. We would really love to have as many community members as possible attend that. I think it's a really important discussion about how we can address childcare, which cuts across economic development, social services, um, just all, it really affects everybody in our community and it, and it truly is a crisis. Not unique to Watertown, but Watertown can work together to address it.
Is that going to be streamed, uh, also for people that can't attend?
We are going to record it and I, if I can figure out the live streaming, we will, or we'll stream it.
YouTube or something like that?
Yes, on either YouTube or Facebook, if we can.
What's the date on?
May, so. May, so tomorrow evening, May fifteenth at five thirty PM on the fourth floor of Lake Area Tech's Student Center.
Mister Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Gable.
Sarah, can you just give us the gist of the announcement?
Yeah.
That was.
Yes, so um at the end of April, we announced that um. Because of shifting in focus and need for their property. The Little Blessings Childcare, um which is formerly Foursquare Church, I um I think their name is a little bit different now, but. Little Blessings Childcare has decided to no longer do childcare and so we've. They have worked with the Mother of God Monastery to transition their childcare to Mother of God Monastery. That's with the understanding that the monastery can raise the funds needed to renovate a building that they currently have. That building has not, it was their former assisted living and so the the building is currently empty, but it does need renovation. For a childcare facility. So that was the largest part of that meeting. By transitioning that childcare from Little Blessings to the monastery, it will cover the, it will. It will add about um depending on the numbers, uh maybe up to fifty childcare spots in Watertown. However, we know that there's still a lot more childcare need in Watertown. So it, the good news is it prevents. A further crisis by um covering that, but it doesn't expand childcare in the way that our community still needs to. So that's why we still need to have discussion about childcare expansion. It's essential that we get the monastery going and then it's also very important that we find other opportunities to expand childcare.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Wow, um I just got another question.
Yeah.
It's been almost a year since the two twelve flats have been.
Yes.
How is that going and is there the list longer? Or is it, how is that working getting people into housing?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm on the board. Brenda's also on the board for that um as well. And so Beth Wallam is the Executive Director for that and she has been doing a fantastic job. It's it's full with a waiting list, nonstop, um and so she's been moving people in and out, so. Continue to house a lot of people there, we're really, she's really working on getting them into long-term housing. Um but knowing that housing is just the first step and it's not gonna fix everything and so that they need continued support once they find housing. To figure out budgeting and finances and and all of that. So it is full with a waiting list. I'm going, so I I don't know what a current waiting list, last time she gave me a number, it was around twenty people on the waiting list. So, yeah, and they're they're local Watertown people, that's one of the criteria. To be that is that they have to be local to Watertown, so it's not that we have people coming from other communities, it's local people.
Okay, well, thanks for the update.
Yes, thank you, and children too. There's always children there, which I don't know that we, I mean, we knew, but we didn't anticipate. That the number.
There's always a need for childcare in our community and that was one thing that the surveys actually came back and showed us was that there was a big need for. For childcare.
Yeah.
Both for working families and and for others, so.
Yeah.
Um I'm glad to see that uh the monastery is working on that, so the Bennett Place Building out there?
No, so it was, see, it was their um the assisted living, which. So that's on the south side of their property. I mean, it's right there on the center, but it's not the Bennett Place, it's.
Saint Anne's Hall, I believe. I believe it was called Saint Anne's Hall.
Oh, yes, yeah, that it's attached to Saint Anne's Hall, I tried to that, thank you. Yep.
Thank them for that.
Yeah, yeah, so it's it's a really important piece. We need the community to support this. To make it happen.
No questions.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, number eight, action to update search and rescue teams members roster.
Okay, so with this, the only, there are two changes. We are adding Joshua. And I'm not sure how to say his last name and Troy, you may know, Kerf, Kerfin, Kerfin. And Maria Eskamilia has been removed.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman to uh approve the updated roster for search and rescue. Any more?
And basically why we do that is for insurance purposes. Okay.
There any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, number nine, action to approve quote for recocking windows and joints on detention center as budgeted. Steve?
Um yes, this is a joint since we had over at the detention center, um actually. Um some of the joints and so we had actually waters running in from the top side, running along behind the cock, but the. This here and so we add is a function that needs to be done on this building. Of course, um my predecessor had done this already on the courthouse, I think probably about five, six years ago or so. I believe somewhere back in that time, so that, so this would be to get that building into shape for any leak each.
Second, motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any more discussion?
Yes, this is the budgeted item. Actually, it came in lower than what was budgeted, so.
You know, just for the amount of, uh just for the public that may be watching, it's for fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars would be the motion to approve.
Plus excise tax.
Plus excise tax, yeah.
Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, number ten, action to approve uh UTV skid sprayer for weed department as budgeted.
Yep, this is to put in the new, a new spray tank in the new um Kubota that we purchased last fall. Um this would be, this one actually has a little bit of a type of a tank that actually drains down into a cone where some of them have little sumps. And we always have issues when we're on side hills for it to drain. This one actually will drain it right down to the bottom. And so we had, so. This is a budget item, of course, and it's for twenty-nine, ten, two thousand.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable.
And if you'd mentioned who the company is you're purchasing.
Um would be purchased from Proag Supply out of Aberdeen. Um they are probably our closest dealer. That actually sells this type of a tank.
Availability?
Um availability, they have it, it'll be delivered right from Fargo, from the manufacturing company.
Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, number eleven, discussion possible action to enact burn ban resolution. I think we're.
Leave it on the, leave it on the agenda.
Uh number twelve, action to approve abatement applications.
No abatements today.
Action, action to approve claims for payment.
Yes, so you all have. That in your packet, it is our monthly claims. Uh just kind of went through and picked a few for the, out of the commissioner's budget for the Tegra Group or his. Some consulting that they have continued to do, two thousand two hundred and eight dollars. You'd look in my election budget, the one right after commissioners, um so far, I've spent nine thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Just on supplies, ballots, programming, medias, all that sort of thing. And so, and that isn't including yet all the workers that will be coming up. So, that was, it was kind of surprising, it's a little bigger primary than we typically have. Um continuing on in the state's attorney's budget on page three. You will notice uh that eighty-two thousand seven hundred fifty, that. Of course, is what we did last with the budget supplement that really came from the Department of Corrections, so it's basically a wash. We're just, uh it came out of her budget, but it's going back in from money that we received last year from the Department of Corrections. Um also, court opponent attorney, I just thought I'd draw attention to that. It was over a hundred thousand dollars in bills this. Month, so you know, that's one that we'll be monitoring throughout the year. Government buildings, we had one of our bigger. Uh claims come in from Johnson Controls at four hundred fifty-seven, seven hundred. Um that's on the HVAC. HVAC re- replacement that we are doing. In the Sheriff's Department, his evidence locker that he had requested to uh purchase, fifty-two fifty, that came in. Uh I don't know that I had egg building banner, some of that work that they did looking at the parking lot for their um. Engineering, a couple different twenty thousand five oh one oh nine or fourteen forty-five. I don't know, I didn't have any other, so total claims for a county and we did our pass-through money last week for this uh state. So total county claims is one million fifty-seven thousand two hundred thirty-two thousand ninety-five cents.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Van Dusen seconds.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen, um to approve the claim for payment. Any more questions?
I, I do have a question now. We do have the catastrophic legal insurance.
Yes.
What uh what's the status of that? Has the claim been filed?
Uh not on the last one, but a previous one, yes. So we, they're going through that now and Lee will be, I'm imagining their next meeting going over. You know, for approval on the one that we sent in was from from previous years. We're working on the latest one right now. We're getting real close to submitting that as well.
It's a lot of work to put those claims together, I can.
Documentation, you gotta go and pull all those jurors and all of the claims from, yeah, it's it's a lot of work. But it's well worth it, we pay into that, so um it's just a process.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number fourteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements, welfare. Office ERA two funds, there's.
Yep, so that is a dollar amount, thirty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-nine thirty that will go back into the um welfare budget. That we have received for ERA two uh fund.
Move to approve then.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman to uh approve the automatic budget supplement. Any further question? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, action to approve personnel changes.
No personnel, no travel.
Personnel, no travel. Well, move down to seventeen, uh public notices, possible quorum of commissioners could be at.
I don't have anything this week.
Suppose that.
I don't have anything going on.
That possible, if, I don't know how many people are gonna go and watch or attend that tomorrow night or any.
Possibly, for the childcare, the L A P C.
Oh.
Just in case, I mean.
Could have.
Could have.
It'll be at Lake Area Tech.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, uh let's move down to number eighteen, any old business? Number nineteen, any new business? Hey, now, number twenty, it's time for the open uh for public comment. Seeing any, phones not ringing? Any commissioner comments?
Mister Chair, just to. Go, go ahead.
Now, go ahead, Commissioner Lee.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um just, just real quick on the uh CCGAC, just to follow up to the visit we did down to the Brookings. Uh County Jail and the Minnehaw County Jail. Um one of the, one of the discussion points right now is whether or not we wanna. Predominantly have a jail with four-bed cells or two-bed cells. I mean, most people are probably familiar with the two, you know, when they think of a jail, they think of a two-bed cell. Um but uh the architects are telling us one, one way that some places are saving money is by having it a uh. You know, predominantly four-bed cells as opposed to two-bed cells. Um so there's, you know, a number of things that we need to think about. So it's mostly the, so the sheriff and and uh. And our Chief Corrections Officer, Matt, are looking at um getting in contact with other counties that have jails like this, just to see what's, what that's like. Um if it works, it sounds like it could be a savings, because you'd have, you know, that, that many fewer doors, that many, that much less plumbing. Um but just so folks know that that's kind of the, the stuff that we're working on right now. Thanks.
Yep, thanks, Commissioner Gable. Uh Commissioner Waterman?
Yeah, this was approached this week by a couple individuals, we're in the storm season. Um they were wondering where the uh emergency shelters were located. One of them was from out in Pelican, Faza. I guess a sign out there wasn't indicating that it, was that the extension center? There was some confusion.
Um I just got a question, Commissioner Van Dusen, is there a website that people can see their storm shelters?
Yes, um I'm looking that up right now, if you'll give me just a moment. Uh we did put out a, a post with the uh storm shelters locations around the community. Pardon me while I look this up. You can continue talking if you want.
Well, they just better. And some of those trailers, it's very, of course, the older ones, they're quite compact. And uh. They were just wondering, you know, where, there was some confusion about where they should.
So.
When we had a storm.
The Cottington County Extension uh Complex is one location, uh the Anza Soccer Fields is another one. Uh we also have um uh locations out at City Park where, where we actually open those up. Whenever there's a watch or a warning, uh the Police Department has keys for those facilities and as soon as those watches or warnings are are. Uh established by the National Weather Service, they're unlocked and open for people. Uh Memorial Park uh is a location as well. Uh we're, what am I forgetting? So we have the Extension Center, Anza Soccer Complex, Memorial Park.
The City Park, everything?
City, City Park does, yeah, City Park does out there. And that's part of that old Project Impact uh funding that we received years ago, so those are locations and they're opened up. So um once those warnings are issued, they're, they become.
Opened under warnings or watch?
Warnings and watches both.
Troy, where can they find that information?
So it was on the Police Department's Facebook page and I had shared it as well, my personal page. Uh but we can repost it, uh maybe on the county website, we'll, we'll get something out.
Yes.
That county website as well.
Send me a link and I can give it to the individual who does our hosting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
We'll get that up for you.
Any other commissioner comments? Twenty, number twenty-one, there is a need for uh an executive session under number uh. One.
Yes.
Uh move that we go into executive session.
Second, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
And there will be no action afterwards, I'm guessing?
Uh, no. Well.
Possibly, I don't know, uh. With mind, there's possible action. Maybe.
Well.
We'll restart.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yep.